It's April thirteenth. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We have all three commissioners present. We have Mr. Danzel, our administrator, and our clerk of the board. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
Hi.
Hi.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, it's been brought to my attention that we need to move item D under open public hearings and put that under regular business. And with that, I would move to adopt the agenda with that adjustment.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, for the adoption of the agenda with the stipulation of moving item D from open public hearings to regular business, item C. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us back down to public comment. Is there anybody for public comment?
Good morning, gentlemen. And with interest on that exact item on the agenda and listening to the composting ideals from our WSU gentleman that's been working very hard on removing beetles, I walk along the river in that area. And everywhere that they are talking about, the concentrations of beetles are trees. It's filled with trees. And there are a lot of birds in those trees. And these beetles have the ability to get on a plane and fly around the country. They surely have the ability and tenacity, maybe the programming and however they're made, to go across the river to come from Prosser. I don't think it's conclusive that it's yard waste. I thought about this a long time, and I don't want to refute or dismay that gentleman. I highly respect him. I think he's doing a great job. But I think that to, in order to pass this ordinance, I think we need an evaluation on how much is being done on those trees. Those trees are being chopped down left, right, and center. And they provide great shade and a lot of other benefits environmentally. But so I would ask that you consider that in your deliberation today. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the phone? So with that, we'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda. I believe there are seven items on the consent agenda today.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of consent agenda items one through seven as presented.
Second.
Been a motion, a second, for the approval of the seven consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to regular business. Item A, action item, permanent closure of the courthouse spiral marble staircase by Mr. Danzel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And much to my chagrin, anyway, because they're so beautiful and such a historic landmark, really, here in Franklin County. But I would ask that we take action today to indefinitely, I think is a better word, close the county spiral marble staircase. And that's after talking with our county risk manager, Mr. Briggs, talking with our facilities, so entire staff, frankly, but Director Jennifer Wagner. And we have just had such a voluminous amount of people falling down that last step that for the betterment of public safety, for also that we're not opening ourselves up to liability and all sorts of exposure, I would recommend that the board take a simple action to indefinitely close the spiral marble staircase until maybe we can come up with a better solution. But it'll give us time without having all the gore.
Comments, commissioners?
So would that be exclusively, or there's a lot of weddings that happen here, somebody would be able to use it on special occasions for, under request?
The idea would be that we develop a, yes, a form that they could fill out, a waiver, basically, to be able to do that. Because, yeah, I think that we all, I get a kick out of it, frankly. I'm sure you all too, too, when we see, like, young people coming to take their wedding pictures and so on and so forth there. I think we could think about something like that. It's just for the amount of everyday use is where we're having problems, I believe.
So with that, Mr. Briggs, I'd like to ask you a question on the waiver, because I've been told that I used to own a gym, that the waiver doesn't, it won't, it won't be backed up in court. Is that the case?
It sort of depends. There's certain things. So with the gym example, the person would be an invitee. And so you can't force an invitee, a business invitee, which has the highest level of protection under Washington law, you can't force them to waive being protected from what they call, like, hidden dangers. So if there's something that's not immediately apparent that someone could encounter at the gym, then, yes, potentially, you could still be liable even though you had them waive. Here, I think the waiver could be effective because we're letting them know, hey, people have been falling down these stairs, so we're putting them on notice. So it's not just that they're waiving liability, they're also acknowledging, hey, these stairs, these stairs might be dangerous. And that could potentially be a defense because it is a defense to damages claimed if someone voluntarily encounters a known risk, which at that point, we would be advising them, look, these stairs could potentially be dangerous, so watch out. So I think with that, it likely would be okay.
Okay. That's my concern. And any other comments or questions, commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve, well, there's no.
It's an action. I mean, I've just moved to approve to close this courthouse spiral marble staircase indefinitely.
Yeah. Been a long time coming. A lot of people have been.
And it's not even a rainy season, though. It used to be when it was raining that we had to worry about this, but they're.
Almost 100% of the time, they acknowledge that they missed the last step. They looked away, they looked up, they, you know, and they missed the last step. So is that how we need to do that, is make a motion, basically?
I just think we need it in the minute. So what I would recommend is that Commissioner move to indefinitely close the county courthouse spiral marble staircase. Just as simple as that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we permanently close the spiral marble staircase in our, middle of our courthouse unless in special occasion as approved by the administrator.
Second.
Been a motion, a second, for the closure of the spiral marble staircase, with the exception by our administrator. Is there any other further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to resolution 2025-242, Sheriff's Department Renewal of Software License Agreement with Smart Force, a Public Safety Platform, presented by Cheryl Burt. Well, we got Monty coming to the mic.
Sorry, you don't have Cheryl. Hopefully, I don't disappoint you too much.
Well, you already have.
But I do, I would like to start by saying I appreciate the appointment to the Advisory Board. And as we move forward with that, very important work over there, I appreciate that. So, thank you. So our Smart Force professional platform is critical, not only in the day-to-day stuff that we do. I was just looking, and while I was sitting here, I got two training requests that's done through that system as well. But it also tracks our use of force and our pursuits, all the things that we are mandated to report to the AG's office. So it streamlines all that stuff. And then it offers a resource to the deputies on the road. They can input, like homicide suspects, critical information that they can access from the field. So it offers that platform as well, so.
Questions, commissioners?
Wondering, I've found in my short time in being in public office, that the state doesn't often turn things off in a short amount of time. This should have been known in advance. Can you speak to that at all, how we didn't know this and why it wasn't in the budget already?
Well, it was originally paid for by the, by the law enforcement grant. So that's why it was, and that, that money was used for, I believe, the acts on cameras, if I remember right. So that's why it wasn't budgeted on our side, because the assumption was it was already covered.
But that's, that's my question, is how could we not have foreseen this? Because they don't often turn a grant off, you know, right now. If we have a chance of a grant next year, we likely are working on that and know now. I'm just wondering how we didn't know that we were going to lose this, this funding.
That I can't speak to. But I do know that the funding is currently available in IS. And most of our professional platforms is run through there for not only the monitoring, but the payment of, so.
But this was not budgeted through IS, correct? Even though they do have funding, it would take away from some other portion of IS's budget in order to transfer this into IS. Is that accurate?
He's saying yes, so.
Okay. What is the software program that we use? It escapes me. I had it prepared yesterday. I left it laying on my desk downstairs. The, the policy.
Power DMS.
Power DMS. Power DMS. So it's my understanding that the sheriff's office, when we separated the Department of Corrections, the sheriff's office was not willing to allow another segment of Power DMS to be used. So we had to go purchase another software for that. And so I'm not, I'm not, I don't believe that I'm interested in supporting this today because we've had to spend additional monies elsewhere where that there couldn't be a shared software. So I'll just leave that, my comments there.
So Commissioner, if I could speak to that real quick.
Sure.
You're talking about two completely different platforms.
I completely understand. They're far.
You're talking about, now you're speaking to Officer Safety Platform, where Power DMS doesn't offer that. So my caution to you is, if you remove this platform, then you're jeopardizing some safety, so.
Okay, could you speak to, just describe that out? Because every, every time that we have attempted or said no, or questioned or anything, it goes back to, well, this is a safety thing, so you have to. And so we're voluntold that we have to or else. And so could you speak to specifics of what that would be?
It's the, it's the information sharing portion of that, that is the safety portion. So it's readily available for deputies to input suspect information, suspicious information. I was looking at it this morning, and it covers the shift briefings. So everything that transpired during the last 24 hours is noted in this. So it may be a small piece to what someone else is looking for in terms of putting the puzzle together.
Okay. When, when is our, when is the renewal date? What is the drop dead date on this?
Looking at this paperwork, it's, there, I think we're past. But, because it's, it's saying from, it's a three-year contract with a payment due now, that, and one due every year within the three years.
So if we're already passed, how are we, how are we, are we grandfathered in, or?
I think they're just allowing us to continue with the good faith that we're going to renew it.
Okay. So that seems to be a, a regular thing that we keep coming up against is we're taken. And I'm not saying it's just, just here and just right now.
Sure.
I've watched it numerous times at the City of Pasco, where that things are brought at the last possible date. And so now you have no choice. It's, you are in a corner where that you don't have an option. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we table resolution 2025-242, so that we can get further clarification and information on this.
Is there any other questions from Commissioner Ramon? Because I have a couple before we table.
No questions at this point.
In the ASR here, the fifth, fifth bullet point, it says the contract was initially funded through a law enforcement grant, which you have told us, allocated from the sheriff's office budget. However, this funding was unexpectedly real allocated for the year of 2025. Did the sheriff's office reallocate this money somewhere else?
I believe it was done through, through the commissioners. In terms of funding, what was, I believe what was already paid for the acts on cameras, and that money was moved to cover that.
I think some of that predates me, but I, some of it doesn't. I'll have to get back to you on that.
I was just wondering, if the sheriff's office had reallocated this, then they're coming to us for more funding. And then it's, it says, and the sheriff's office was not informed of this change. So I guess it wasn't done by, as a result, the association costs were not incorporated into the budget planning for the sheriff's office. Do you guys have extra funding in your budget to possibly cover this?
We do not, no.
Okay, those are all the questions I have.
If the motion's been made, I will second it as far as table.
There's been a motion and a second to table this until next week. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Takes us down to regular business, item C, establishing a compost procurement ordinance presented by Mr. Erdman, which Mr. Erdman's not here, but welcome, Shirley.
Craig was not able to make it today. Excuse me. First of all, I would like to clarify what this ordinance is about. This is not anything to do with organic materials processing, okay? That is something that will be coming down the line. We are working on a solid waste management plan. And with that plan, we will go into the organics and what's happening with that. As far as processing goes, all this is, is an ordinance that, in effect, it's regarding procurement of materials. And what it is, is just a matter of putting in place that when possible, if products are available, such as mulch, fertilizer, that type of thing, ground cover, maybe some prevention of runoff, water runoff, that type of thing, within the soils, then it would be a matter of if it's available, if materials are available, if they are cost conducive to the project, and if the materials that are recycled compost are available for use by the time the project needs them, then that Franklin County would use that type of material. And that, that is all this is about. And so a lot of this is just a matter of the government, the state, trying to kind of incentivize people that, hey, you know, we've got methane emissions with landfills and such. If some part of the organics materials can be recycled into usable product, that you would please try to use those, you know, try to buy them when you can, in order to, you know, I know with us, I checked with Jennifer Wagner, and she uses a chicken fertilizer. That would be considered recycling. So that is all this is about. This has nothing to do with organics recycling, with organics processing, any of that type of thing. Again, that will be coming when we talk about the solid waste plan. And we're looking at early next year to have that before the board. So again, I wanted to clarify that part of it, because this was supposed to be passed January of '23. And I think due to some verbiage within the ordinance at the time, then it gave a different viewpoint as far as what it was about. If you have any questions, then.
Questions, commissioners?
I have no questions.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
This is an open public hearing, I believe, right?
It is not.
It is not.
No, we moved.
Oh, that's right, we moved it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of ordinance 09-2025 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, for the passage of ordinance 09-2025. Are there any other further comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us down to the open public hearing, resolution 2025-219, in the matter of adopting the capital asset inventory record policy and procedure. At this time, I'll open the open public meeting and turn it over to Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The, the policy before you, the capital asset inventory record policy and procedure, offers key benefits in three main areas: improved fiscal accountability, enhanced operational efficiency, and asset security and risk management. This policy is part and parcel with the procurement policies that we've already passed. The, kind of the big takeaway here is, you'll have a better idea of what your stuff is, the value of it, if you need to get rid of it, and you'll be able to withstand the scrutiny of an audit. And so for those reasons and many more, I think it's a good idea to adopt this policy. One of the biggest things here is it allows us to make better decisions regarding our asset maintenance, replacement schedules, utilization. We can identify underutilized assets, see if we need to get rid of them, or do something with other, with them. It's just a good idea and a good way of being organized with all the, all the inventory that we have on record. So it's my recommendation that we pass this today.
Commissioners, comments?
Appreciate all the work that went into this.
So it is an open public meeting. Is there anybody from the public that would like to weigh in on this? Maybe on the phones?
So there's a comment from the public. Yes. My answer is yes. This is good stewardship, and this is what the county needs. We need to have things succinct. I understand the frustrations when things come up that weren't expected. We're, we've been in a transition period with this particular administration, and many changes have happened very early on. So grace, but move forward, please. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? No more questions or comments from the commissioners. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution 2025-219 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion, a second, for the approval of resolution 2025-219. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And at this time, I'll close the open public meeting. Open public hearing, excuse me. Moves us down to Commissioner/Administrator updates. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I would like to also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Wes McCart and Council Briggs for reviewing that last policy that we just passed and making it the product that it is. So thank you, gentlemen. I met with each commissioner individually to discuss this agenda. This week here, just a couple days ago, I attended the Historical Preservation Grant Committee meeting, which is modeled after the program that Duane Davidson had instituted in Benton County. The committee has now approved applications for the Franklin County Historical Society, the North Franklin County Historical Society, as well as smaller projects here at the courthouse by our own Jennifer Wagner. I even got roped into becoming a member of the North Franklin Historical Society, so I'm looking forward to that. Pretty cool stuff they're doing, actually. Met with the accounting staff and the auditor's office regarding a myriad of issues from financial policies, which I want to vet through the treasurer's office first, but you should be seeing those on your agenda here soon. It's in draft status right now. And just working with Tim Anderson, advance of the budget and reviewing our current financial position. I know that I probably do this too often, but Tim Anderson is really an incredible asset to the county and has gone above and beyond. And just want to thank Mr. Anderson for all of his hard work and effort when it comes to putting this budget together. It's not easy. One thing I want to brag about, and I don't know if he's here or he left the building, he left the building, but Bo, the day that we talked about the strategic plan survey, Austin was in here, and then Bo and Austin and all the guys got together, and they were able to get the survey online that day. So we've been live and online with our strategic plan survey. I just think that deserves a shout out. You say you want something done, and it's done within like 20 minutes, pretty cool thing. Met and spoke with Eric Johnson, as you know. Here's something that's a little bit near and dear to my heart, a couple things. Number one, during our staff meeting, it was pretty neat, we were talking about different things and what we could do. We're always kind of talking about what we could do here or there for not just employees, but for the public that's visiting the courthouse, if there's anything that we could be aware of. And one thing that came up through that conversation was checking our Narcan in every office and making sure that it's not expired. And it's, it's incredible. I'm sure you've seen the videos of, it's even like 300-pound, incredibly fit, almost like bodybuilder-type police officers, that just making an arrest and accidentally ingesting some of this stuff will go down to the ground. And so we just want to make sure that we're ready and proactive on that front. I think it also ties in with being good on risk management. And then the other thing, and this one's a little bit more of a personal deal, and you can slap me down if you think it's a bad idea, but I've actually seen one of these in use. And so I had the department heads order one for each floor of the courthouse. But it's those anti-choking devices that are used for kids when they get something trapped, where it kind of acts as a reverse vacuum, and you're able to get it dislodged. I don't know why every parent in America doesn't have one, but I think that we ought to have one here. And even if it's above and beyond and too much, we're overprotective or overthinking, I think it's, in total, it's going to cost us about $300 to have the peace of mind knowing, even if our own employees are, you know, if you have some carne asada from Eric Johnson from facilities, you might need one. But I think it's a good investment to have. So you'll see that. I didn't want to hide it from you. And if you tell me no on those things, I understand. But it just seemed also, just in hearing you gentlemen, I just didn't think it would be something that you would say no to. It seemed like something you'd be very supportive of, was just checking to make sure that we have that available. Commissioner Bowman has a saying that I've really taken to liking, which is that, you know, proper planning prevents poor performance. I think it's one of those ideas. And then we've talked, too, about kind of even like incorporating, you know, the defib paddles, and just kind of making a, taking a health and safety wellness approach, because the funding is there. It's not going to be, it's not going to count against our current expense fund. This is all available from grant funding. So, sorry, I'm a little bit wordy in my update, but those were things that were important to me, and I think that'll be good for the county. And then, of course, anything you all want me to be working on, let me know.
Well, I'd say it's better to be proactive than reactive, so.
Yeah.
And now, where would these be positioned, so everybody will know? Will they be out in like a glass case, so they're readily available for the public to use if?
I need to, I almost wouldn't be completely opposed if every department had one, to be honest with you. But the idea would be that at least we have one and eat one department per four. And then we would identify that and every, send out emails to where everybody knew that if you have a choking incident in your office, I'll tell you how I saw it. It was a little girl over in Olympia, Washington, in a restaurant, and the restaurant didn't have it. It was a grandparents out in their car had one, they weren't at part of the table, and they saw the commotion, and they ran outside to their car, ran back in, and it saved this, they said even, it saved this girl, it was a little three-year-old girl had gotten whatever stuck. So anyway, it's, when you see that happen, it's a pretty good selling point.
Yep. Thank you. I think it's a great idea. But again, I think it'd be readily available for the public to use if they were, if it was out there, it was accessible by them.
I, what I, I think what we'll do is we'll make sure, I'll talk with Jennifer and maybe Jeff and some of the folks, and come up with just a good game plan, and then just spread that far and wide.
I don't know about the Narcan, because that, you know, that has to be administered in the right way, so. But the device would be nice to have for anybody. in the right way, so, but the device would be nice to have for anybody.
To be honest with you, I was thinking even, we've got the, where they have the, where mothers can go in and breastfeed, I think it'd be natural to have something next to that even, or, you know, whether it could be, where they know it's family-friendly, you know, area that they could go to. I, I think we could come up with a good game plan.
Sounds like a winner. Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you for, for thinking of those things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, after the Commissioners' meeting, I went on the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery site walk, and when we had the, the Chair of the Mental Health Advisory Board come a few weeks back, they described the Phase Two, or the, the housing component as being in the brainstorm stage, and that was again, the way that it was described, and I'm just completely unfamiliar with receiving grant funding based on a brainstorm. And so with that, I'm supposed to sit down today and get some more clarification from leadership of the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery on, on cost expenses, and what's happening, and, and what, what is a brainstorm? Because if you can get grant funding based on a brainstorm, I, that's an interesting, interesting concept. Meeting with the PA's office about pending litigation and other legal concerns, lots of phone calls with our Administrator and staff, agenda prep, and then one thing that I think that you should each have a, a copy of this. Pass that down. So going through this, was really, really concerned for the public, what this is, is a Washington State Homeless System Performance Report Card, and if you go on that, you can look at county by county, all of the statistics. So this first page that you see here talks about some of the costs and expenses. For instance, we spend an average of $96 per day per homeless statewide, transitions of $54 a wide, rapid rehousing of 55 a day, homelessness $44 a day. And so then if you go two pages in, that is the Franklin County component, and as I went through this, as you know, I'm looking at Columbia Valley Center for Recovery and trying to understand the cost there, and if you, you know, so looking at cost across the board, whether it's Columbia Valley Center for Recovery, or state homelessness versus Franklin County. Statewide, it says we spend $96, and in Franklin County, we spend over $1,800. So 18 times more expensive to emergency shelter somebody in Franklin County, apparently. And then if you go look at housing outcomes, and emergency shelter, the cost to exit somebody from emergency shelter, if you look at the third page there, according to this, which is a self-reported statistic from our, the people that operate that system on our behalf, emergency shelter costs over $1 million to exit somebody from that system in Franklin County. And just as a comparison, if you go to the second from the last page, it's the comparisons of Franklin County versus Benton County. And if you look at the cost to emergency shelter somebody in Franklin County, it's over $1,800 a day, and in Benton County, it's 65 bucks. If you look at the, at the emergency shelter, exit from emergency shelter, it's over $1 million in Franklin County, and it's 4,200 bucks in Benton County. And so, wanted to, to bring this, as I, as I went through it, there's, there's multiple areas that are just, have huge, huge disparities between Benton and Franklin Counties, and so I would like to ask our Administrator to look into this on our behalf. It's the same organization that operates in both Benton and Franklin County, it's the same people, it's the same office, it's the same, it's the same, it's the same process by the same people, and how we can have, have a difference of, of $65 a day versus $1,800 a day. To exit somebody from the system, over $1 million, to exit somebody versus $4,200. There's just some absolutely gigantic differences here that, that defy, defy imagination, and so would like to ask if our Administrator would look into this and potentially ask those that operate this on our behalf to come and, and share with us and help us understand. My understanding is, is that we self-report these numbers, and if that's the case, would like to have an understanding of, of why that we're, you know, 65 bucks versus 1,800 in the same office that does the same thing in the same community. So with, with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Mullin. So this week, I had a call about the ice rink out at the Hapo Center and some contract questions, and so I know that they want to meet with us, so I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same page and, and knew about the concerns for the adult ice rink. Also, just want to announce that the Benton Franklin Fair starts next week. It's a well-supported fair, and I think it is extremely valuable to our youth throughout both counties. Had the Administrator meeting with Mr. Danzel, and then also, there was another fatality at the end of Foster Wells on 395. You know, on the east end of Foster Wells is a lighted stop sign, and I believe the traffic is, well, we know it's a lot more busier on 395 than it is on the Clovis Highway, so I would ask that, you know, if, could maybe mention that to Mr. Erdman, and see if that's something that we can't take a look at, get placed. It's a very dangerous intersection, if you're pulling a trailer or anything trying to cross 395, at, at any of the intersections from Pasco North for the first, close to 10 miles, it's, it's extremely dangerous to cross that, and I know, and whenever we're pulling trailers, we, we go down to King City and cross on the overpass, because traffic is, it's like playing a game of Frogger, trying to get across there. So anyways, just encourage everybody to go out to the fair this next week, Benton Franklin Transit will be giving out free rides, so appreciate it, and everybody have a, that's my.
So if I understood you correctly, this accident happened on 395?
They were coming down Foster Wells, ran the stop sign, got.
Foster Wells, on crossing 395.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of accidents at that intersection. And then the other thing is, if you're pulling a trailer, there's not really ample room to try to fit in between the two highways.
Right.
You gotta make it, you gotta time it up to cross both, both, both ways, north and south, and that's the way it is all the way up the, the corridor there. My last week consisted of a, the SAO State Auditor's Office entrance conference that Mr. Danzel and I attended, I met with Eric Johnson, had numerous calls, and still receiving them, Alder Road, they're complaining terribly about the dust on the road, and I would ask, just ask our road department to maybe consider not going into the burrow pits, because every time we go into the burrow pits, we get into dirt, and when you bring dirt up on gravel, it mixes and it creates more dust. If we could just keep the gravel on top of the road and manage it like they manage Hope Valley, no Holly Drive, my dad, he, long, long ago, when he was alive, he talked to the road grader, and they've never made one of the burrow pits, and we don't have the dust on that road like we have on other roads. But it's, it's a way of management, and when you get into the burrow pits, you're bringing dirt up, dirt creates dust. They're complaining terribly on Alder Road, and again, I would really like to consider looking at paving roads again in Franklin County, start the process here, because Alder Road is the road that the Mayor Ministries is on, and you got all these young girls down there, isn't good for them to be inhaling dust. Cedar Road, Cedar Road hasn't been bladed a while, it is really rough. Lots of calls on septic systems that I've been just shuffling them to Mr. Danzel, and we've been working through it, but a lot of problems here that are occurring in the county with disgruntled members of our Franklin County, our residents with, working with the Department of Health on the septic systems, and basically not being treated with respect. The one guy was very upset the way he was treated by the Benton Franklin Health Board with their septic system. And the last thing is, we got this for our donation, these are the tickets to the fair. Now, as Chairman of the County Commissioner, they were put on my desk, I, with the agreement of my other Commissioners, what I'd like to see is the electeds and the department heads are out, but all the other people of the county, all the employees, if they'd like to put their name in the hat, if they will attend, we'll do a drawing, and there'll be some lucky winners going to the fair. If the other Commissioners agree with that, we'll, we'll do a, but the department heads, the elected officials, we're out, we can buy our own way into the fair if we're going. But the people that are working here, let's give them the opportunity to go enjoy that fair. So they're here, I'm gonna hand them over to Mr. Danzel, and it's up to you, sir, because it looks like I got an agreement with them from my other Commissioners. There's, there's parking passes and tickets in here, and then there's, there's also complimentary tickets to go eat too, you get free meal when you go. Yeah.
I, Mr. Chairman, I will accept them and then do like I do with everything that's of high importance to me, I'll turn them over to the Clerk of the Board, Theresa Alver.
You're, you're something else, I'm telling you. All right, with that, we'll move down to correspondence.
Mr. Chairman, before that.
Yeah, Mr. Bowman.
Think it's something to think about, I know that it's a high priority for all three of us to pave roads, take care of our roads, and I think we've made some neat steps in that direction with not doing a road shift in 2025, and so I think that we should start just considering, starting to think about it. I know in the past, that we used to chip seal almost 100 miles a year, doing the, the rehab and the refurbish, and now we're down to, a good year is about 25 to 30, and, and so, a couple of different components. See how that we can get our chip seal preservation back up as far as we can, and the second is, is maybe we, maybe we put a goal in there, say we want to pave a mile a year, two miles a year, whatever. Franklin County has 1,000 miles of road, about 600 are paved, about 400 miles are still gravel, and so I don't know, I don't know what that is, I don't know, I don't know, we'd have to start figuring out the mechanics of it and how, how we would pay for it and what that would look like, but I would like to see our preservation chip seals get back up quite a ways, and, and the second piece is to, to, like you said, you know, go pave Alder, go pave Cedar, go, go take some of these areas where it's a hill, where trucks climbing are just causing that washboard to happen, and think that, think that we have a good opportunity in front of us. Our asset manager at Public Works has been doing a, a good job over the last quite a number of years of getting our equipment in, in top shape, we have a, a new chip seal machine, we've got some, some new brooms, we've got some, got some nice equipment to do this with, and would like to see us increase our preservation by, you know, two to four times, plus do some, some paving. Let's, let's get back in front of this and be on offense, not defense.
I like it, and as Commissioners, Mr. Danzel reminded me of this, when it was first put into place for counties, we were road Commissioners, is what we were put into place for, and that's why our two main responsibilities are roads and law enforcement, and that's why I think we need to make sure that, you know, we take care of our law enforcement. I think information is incredibly important, but we are in a shortfall here, we are coming up short on our, on our funding, and that's why I've always said, we gotta make sure on grant money, because if, when it quits coming in, then it, it, you gotta use your own budget. So the grant money, we gotta make sure when we keep passing these, this grant money that's coming in, who's going to fund it, how is it going to be funded when the grant money runs out? And that's what we gotta make sure we get a grasp on, and have a means, especially it is an important thing as this information for safety for officers, so I, I want to make sure we get on top of this next week and get, get it resolved for our Sheriff's Department.
I agree, I agree with that wholeheartedly. On the, the roads, the, the number one product that we need is rock, and so I've talked to our Administrator, our Building and Planning Director, Mr. McCart, and Mr. Erdman, our Public Works Director, about looking and saying, can we go and pre-purchase rock? Whether, you know, we contract with somebody to, to process rock and, and build it on our behalf, there's a number of sites out there that are available, that, that the property owners would be willing to work with us on, and, you know, if we can go process the rock ourself at roughly half the expense of what it is to, to, to buy it at retail, and it would, it takes some coordination, I know our Public Works Director is already working on that, our engineer is working on that, and some of the ways that I've talked at WASAC about, you know, if we could, instead of the, the state giving us money, money's short everywhere right now, instead of doing that, give us the option as, as a county or a local jurisdiction to, to have a expedited process for permitting from the Department of Ecology for crushing rock, so that we don't have to wait, you know, 12 months to get a permit. If we can go have an expedited process for permitting, and we can go crush 50,000 tons of rock and, and put, you know, two, three years of, of inventory in front of us at a, at a, you know, 50% or less cost, I've done, I've, I've crushed a lot of rock, and, and it's significantly less expensive, but it takes some planning to do that, because you, you gotta, you know, do it in advance, and so I think we have a lot of opportunity with the three of us in close alignment on our priorities of, of roads and public safety, that I think this is the time to go.
Yep, and I know that the Bureau's up there crushing at Mesa, and I think Mr. Erdman, I, I've asked him to already get in touch with them, because that's another government entity, there's no reason why we couldn't team up when that crusher's there and both of us.
Absolutely.
Use that rock, so. Good input. All right, with that, we'll move down to, no correspondence? Oh.
Uh, this is, it's not a, a request for hire, this is actually from your OPD Director, Mr. Ziegler, and it's outgoing correspondence, so it's, he's wishing to send this onward and upward, if you could review and give your blessing, that would be fantastic.
Is he asking for a signature from us? Nope. Okay. All right, with that, we'll move down to public comment, is there anybody for public comment?
Hey, it was very good to hear that discussion. I used to work for the County Road Department in Spokane, as putting myself through college, and we did chip and seal. When you start talking pavement and heavy equipment going on it, you are into a heavy maintenance budget to follow that. So I do want to see the dust go down, I want to see the rough board, the rough boards down, but when you're talking about putting more money into roads, and we just had a discussion about safety of our, our deputies in the field, I, I challenge any of you, if you've not done a ride along with the County Sheriff's Department, do it. You're going to find out how far apart they are, and how much ground they have to cover, and if they can't get critical information when they're in the field, they're on their own. So I want, what I'm saying here, gentlemen, is balance, because when you're sitting in the audience listening, yes, the roads are important, but chip and seal is the best way to keep county roads in good shape, adequate for the farming, and yes, some paving is, is good, but if you look at Road 100 and Road 68 in the city, you can see the sinking, and they're putting stuff in the cracks, and they're still sinking, they're becoming pretty bad, and it's very, because the expense of maintenance is high, so balance, and I appreciate the deep dive that Mr. Bowman did, our Commissioner Bowman, on the cost of somebody in Franklin County and Benton County in the same facility, because Benton County pays for everything on the fair. I don't know that we contribute anything, and we had a $100,000 proposal last week to help out, I think there's room to help each other out creatively, and I challenge you as good neighbors that we benefit from that fair as much as they do, but if there's a, there's, if our funds are being bleated out in that kind of disparaging, then maybe there's some room to, to meet each other. I, I definitely advocate for good neighborly help and points of, of mutual interest that benefit both counties, okay? So the last thing I want to talk about, and I think I have a tentative meeting set for Monday with Mr. Danzel, in regard to the public defense letter, legislating from the bench is unconstitutional, and I've said this several times, and I'm going to ask for an official presentation on the power of a First Amendment petition redressing grievances from the county level. You have the authority to redress your grievances directly with your legislators, but there's a way to do it, and we have a presentation to do it, and if somebody does not uphold their oath to the Constitution, they are referred to the authority, and in this case, it would be the DOJ, and no, I'm not dreaming big, that's the path. That's the path. So, please listen to the presentation, authorize it, we'll discuss it. Several counties are already moving forward. I suggest you get on board.
Anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the phones? With that, do we have a need for an executive session?
Yes, just very briefly under...
Your time's up.
Oh. We'll just have to guess of what it's about. I can't tell you now. So, it's under RCW 4230-110-1I triple I litigation. We'll need five minutes. It's very brief.
Do we need to go downstairs for this?
I'll leave that to the board, but I would need the board, myself, Mr. Danzel, and Ms. Lloyd present.
Clerk?
Clerk could keep time, especially if we're going downstairs.
Yeah. Do you want to do it for ten minutes to make sure that...
It does take us about five to walk downstairs.
Yeah, so, we'll recess and do executive session at 9:52 and come out at 10:02. Minutes.
I have to tell you a couple of stories. Don't put on many people I know that have high performance driving awards with me.
Yes, mine is high performance.
So, I, my brother-in-law and I drove to...
We were back from executive session with no decisions being made, and at this time, I believe this meeting is over. We can adjourn and then go into closed session. So, at this time, I, I will close the commissioner's meeting and move into a closed session for twenty minutes?
I hope you...
I have it scheduled for 20 to 30.
What?
We don't have to announce it.
We don't have to announce it, but hoping you can get it before 30.
Okay.
Let's go, ready, set, go.
We're going into closed session.
It depends on how confident you are.
For as long as we need to go, I guess.
Oh, so 45? Sounds like that was even up.
Yeah, I've already adjourned the meeting yet.